Right. So we need to confirm the minutes of the council meeting, which took place on the 17th of July. Are you agreed that I sign these as a correct record, or does anyone have any comments?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Mr. Taylor, are there any apologies for absence this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received apologies from councillors John Fraser, Jill Hargreaves, Christian Hess, Stephen Hill, Kika Miralies, Libby Piper, Wyatt Ramsdale, Jeanette Stennett, Stuart Stennett, and Ross Welland.
Thank you very much. Council, in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct, do members have any non-procurnary or disclosable procurnary interests to declare? Mr. Taylor?
None received in advance, Madam Mayor.
Any councillors? None. No further declarations? Item four on the agenda are mayor's announcements. I would, I'd like to point out that to members that you may have seen on your way in that the plaque from HMS Hamilton has been restored, and it is now hanging in the corridor just outside the council chamber, along with the painting of HMS Hamilton, which has been loaned to the council by Gottlieb Museum. So thank you very much, Gottlieb Museum. They will be sending us some words that we can hang alongside that, which is forthcoming. We're grateful to councillor Inchbold, Jane Woolley, and Alison Patterson, curator at Gottlieb Museum, for their work in enabling these items to be displayed here at the council offices. I have two announcements. The first one is just to remind all of us who were at the Canadian Memorial unveiling on the 7th of September. I'm sure all of those of you who were present will agree with me that it was both a poignant and really beautiful day. And we had representatives from the Canadian Army, Air Force, Navy, British side as well. We had Commander Susan Lochner. We had someone from the Canadian High Commission. We had the Secretary of State, the Foreign Secretary, I beg your pardon. It was a really lovely, lovely day. And it went, I was very nervous about the day, actually, because of all the military that was there. And we know how they like precision. But I have to say that the officers of this council did us absolutely proud. And I'd like us to give them all a huge round of applause, in particular to Fay Pringle, who masterminded the whole thing. And there's one other person that I'd like to thank for having the idea of the event. And it didn't happen just by accident. There was an awful lot of hard work by many councillors around the table, councillor Byram, councillor King, councillor Jenny Els, and so on. But the one whose idea it was, was councillor Holder. And at many points along the journey of getting all of this organised, I think he was despairing that it would never happen. So, Nick, thank you very, councillor Holder, thank you very much for having had the idea and for your perseverance. I would like to also thank all of you who have so graciously purchased Army Benevolent Fund ties, and I see that you're wearing them. I note that councillor Holder is not wearing one, but even though he's the only person, he's the only person who's actually a member of the ABF. He does have a tie, but he forgot it this evening. And also, ladies, I've only just been able to procure some silk scarves, which councillor King is so beautifully displaying. So if anyone else wants a tie or a scarf, the scarves are pure silk, they're not polyester, and they are hand-stitched, let Alison know. They're 20 pounds, either the ties or the, so that would be. I don't plan this year to have many events in support of the charity. I'd rather support them along the way through things like this. But I will have one dinner evening, which will be on the 15th of February at the TA in Farnham. And that will be an evening full of surprises. There will be military involvement, of course, but, and we're working on the details of that. So if you want to save the date, please do so now, and I'll ensure that that's sent out through Democratic Services. So those are my announcements. I've had many, many other lovely engagements, but, you know, I think we have, we want to get through this meeting, so I won't give you all those details now. I'll reserve it for the end of the year, when I'll give you a long list. No, I won't, I won't give you a long. So, moving on to item five on the agenda, questions from the members of the public. Have we received any questions from members of the public?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item six, have any questions been received from members?
None received.
Well, moving right along, on item seven, have we had any motions received from members?
None received, Madam Mayor.
Excellent. So that brings us to the substantive item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the executive leader of the council to present, please.
I have the minutes to present from the executive of the 8th of October, and I believe I have a second.
Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, thank you. These minutes, just for clarification for members, can be found and are listed on the to follow part one item that came out to you at the weekend on page two. Madam Mayor, the first item in part one of those minutes is Waverley's new economic development strategy for the years 2018 to 2023. I'm aware that there are a number of speakers, people who've already indicated they wish to speak on this. There is one recommendation to council. I think the strategy itself, which is an amazing piece of work, carried out not just by officers, but by the ONS Working Group, and so many organisations within the borough, businesses and other key stakeholders, chambers of commerce and so forth, who've really fed into this to make it Waverley's document and a real, living, breathing, working document for now, and a document that we can continue to grow for the future. But as I say, I believe there are others who wish to speak further on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers? Councillor Mulliner?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This was indeed very much a piece of joint working, and I think on behalf of the overview and scrutiny committee, we'd like to thank the officers for their very positive and constructive attitude. I can commend the document as a good read. It contains a wealth of information. We live in this borough, but I'm prepared to bet that most of us, if we read through it, would find things about the borough in the economic data, which were a surprise to us. And I can recommend it for that alone. I think it's now in a state where it's saying realistically what Waverley and its partners can and cannot do, and what they can and cannot be expected to do to influence economic development in the borough. We are not powerless. Not only are we the local planning authority, and it is no coincidence that the tenor of this plan is 2018 to 2032, precisely the same deliberately as that of the local plan, but also we're in a position to actually monitor all that happens in the borough. We have an oversight role. And it's up to us, I think, through the officers and members, to make sure that we make use of that knowledge to liaise effectively with central government and other sources of funds to make sure that business in the borough can benefit from them as and when they arise. So leader said, there is an extra section, the action plan, very much a living part of the document, which will undoubtedly evolve as time goes on and circumstances change. But all in all, I'd like to thank all those who worked on it, and I think we now have a document we can be genuinely proud of. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Mulliner. Councillor Seaborn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to echo what councillor Mellon has just said. When the draft economic strategy came out for consultation during May and June, it contained a lack of precision over the council's role in delivering the six proposed themes. Furthermore, several substantial economic sectors were not mentioned, and there was a significantly greater focus on the economic development of the four main settlements than there was of the surrounding rural areas. I'm delighted to see that the document before us today has incorporated much of the feedback from the consultation and the subsequent scrutiny work by the Customer Service and Value for Money ONS Committee. There are still areas that I believe could be strengthened, such as the understanding and support of the rural economy. But we now have a strategy that sets out the council's role in understanding, championing, and supporting economic development in the borough, and which demonstrates a far better understanding of how the Waverley economy works. Recognising that we're being asked to approve a living document, I'm confident that by supporting the recommendation before us, we will launch a strategy which, when implemented, has the potential to significantly strengthen economic development in the borough. I will certainly be supporting the recommendation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Seaborn. Any other speakers? Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My only concerns about this actually are, I'm pleased, actually, there is a mention of Brexit and what it's actually might be an actual threat to us, but there's nothing in the action plan that says what we might be doing about it. I'm also aware that many other local authorities have actually tried to understand what the impacts in their borough might be, particularly in one like this one where we have lots of rural workers and immigration might be an impact. I just think we could have done a lot more to actually flesh out some of the issues that we might be facing in the next few months, where other boroughs have done so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Beeman?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. There's a saying which says, many cooks spoil the broth. In this case, I think many cooks have made a brilliant document in the sense, and I speak as a member of the working group that was formed, representing Farnham, and indeed, we all worked together to present a document that is for the benefit of the borough. I would like to say that, yes, Brexit is now mentioned, but, I mean, I think Brexit is a tale that could be so long, it could write forever, and we have to wait until the actual events turn to reality. So I too would like to commend this document to the borough, to the council.
Thank you, councillor Beeman. Councillor MacLeod?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Hyman left me a note when he suddenly left the meeting, asking me to apologise to you for suddenly leaving me. The reason is he's feeling particularly unwell. He should have actually come in the first place, and he doesn't want to stay here and sneeze over everything else.
Thank you.
I'm passing on his apologies.
Thank you for letting us know that. Any other speakers on this item? So the recommendation is to approve, oh, I beg your pardon, councillor Edwards, I do apologise.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank the Chambers of Commerce portfolio holder, the Economic Development Team, Towns and Parishes, ONS members for their commitment and effort on bringing the strategies together. Their work has helped create a focused strategy and a measurable action plan. The Economic Development Strategy recognises the importance of a healthy local economy in making Waverley an attractive place and in enhancing the quality of life experienced by its residents. We have a strong local economy and is service-driven, largely by the needs of a highly skilled, out-commuting workforce. Conversely, around 20,000 workers in commute to the borough, reflecting a third of the local available jobs. This is an economically vibrant place to live and work. We have three parts: economic development vision, long-term economic plan, and the action plan. The vision for Waverley is a successful place where local businesses can grow and flourish, where all our rural and urban communities have access to sustainable, high-quality employment, where everyone living and working Waverley can share in its beautiful natural environment and economic prosperity. Six key themes: encourage sustainable business and employment growth in both our urban and rural areas through initiatives, events, council contracts, et cetera; provide high-quality business and employment support, helping individuals in our deprived areas with skills to enter employment; and communicating effectively with the business community; supporting healthy towns and village centres, working with towns and parishes and chambers on projects to support our unique high streets; encourage a local, successful visitor economy that is right for Waverley; encourage a visitor economy with working with other colleagues in Visit England, Tourism South East, Surrey Hills, and the National Trust; expand links with and support for the education sector; support the UCA in Farnham, which was voted Modern University of the Year 2018, a fantastic achievement. This was by the Times and Sunday Times, with helping them with student accommodation and workspace; support the right housing developments in Waverley. Given shrinking local authority budgets, the scope for direct investment by the council is limited. So its emphasis must be on playing to its strengths by building strong, positive partnerships with all parts of the local business community and other key stakeholders, such as the Local Enterprise Partnership, Surrey County Council, public sector bodies, institutions, and support providers. I commend this strategy to the council to be adopted and look forward to working with all its partners and local communities to achieve the strategy's objectives. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Edwards. Any other speakers? If not, then the recommendation is to approve the Economic Development Strategy. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Leader?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. The next item on the part one of this executive agenda is the Treasury Management Framework and the capital strategy. Now, the council, as many members will already know, is required to have in place capital strategy, setting out how capital expenditure and investment decisions are made and reviewed. This particular item is required to be approved yearly by council. Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if there are any speakers to this item, but that concludes my summary of it. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to comment? Councillor Band?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Particularly pleased to see this capital strategy coming forward as a link between the capital expenditure process, which the ONS committees have looked at, and the recommendations coming there, coming through into a document which links into the treasury framework. And I think it's most appropriate that it appears in the form it now does. So I thank the executive for bringing this forward.
I agree. Thank you. Anyone else? Right, if not, then the leader, would you want to sum up, or shall we go to the recommendation? Recommendation?
Can we go to the recommendation?
Sure. The recommendation is to approve the Treasury Management Framework Capital Strategy. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Leader?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item three on this part one agenda is delivery of the Housing Capital and Cyclical Works Programme for 2019 to 20. That's also accompanied by annex three, pages 113, 116. I think it's a really good piece of work here. I think councillors cross-party will agree that we have a housing team and a housing department that we should be rightly proud of. We deliver some amazing housing. We saw that just a few weeks ago when we went to the opening of the first phase up at Oxford Ridge. And as a council, what is absolutely right and proper is that we continue to invest within that team for us and to enable us to deliver for the future, as will be, and we know is so much needed within our own borough. As I say, Madam Mayor, there are two recommendations. I'm not sure if we have any speakers to this item. Thank you.
Would anyone like, wish to speak on this item? Councillor Follows?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will just echo the sentiments of the leader there, that actually, I do completely agree. Our housing team do a fantastic amount with the resources that they've got. I'd only conclude that we need a lot more, like Oxford Ridge. We need much more investment in social housing, and we're not doing enough. But this is a good investment in the team that hopefully will be delivering more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor King?
Thank you very much indeed, Madam Mayor. Yes, to echo the leader's sentiments and councillor Follows, primarily, the recommendations here will actually cover off the shortfall in cyclical maintenance of our existing property, which has been on hold while we've had the 1% rent freeze over the period of four years. And we've only been doing what I call essential maintenance. So our property is falling a bit behind. We need to catch up as well as to carry on building. Thank you.
Thank you for that, councillor King. Any other speakers? Leader, would you like to sum up, or shall we go to the recommendation? There are two recommendations from the executive that are detailed on page two of the to-follow book. Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Now, notes of statements on part two items. We have one on the planning pitch strategy. Councillor Dinas, or do you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a substantial strategy, but you'll be pleased I'm going to keep these notes very brief. And it reflects the importance that we, as a council, place on sport within the health and wellbeing of our residents. The strategy provides an evidence-based document which not only highlights sports provision and demand, but provides evidence to justify developer contributions towards sports facility infrastructure improvements. This is around the borough by section 106, pick and seal. It also deals with maintenance, quality improvements, additional pitch provision to meet the demand from development. I'd like to place my thanks to Matt Lank and his team for developing such an excellent strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Dinas. Moving on to executive item 39/18, Budget Management Report. Councillor Hall, if you wish to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. The report notes good progress against the budget year-to-date, with no material deviations from planned spend identified at this stage. There are two specific matters raised in this report. First concerns a French and visitor centre redevelopment, which has been delayed due to a delay in getting the required consents. The second, the housing team are switching the funding on a buyback property. Otherwise, all is in order, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hall. Moving on to executive 40/18, lease of cricket square nets and scorebox, Grayswood Green. Councillor Knowles?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm delighted to see that a long lease has been granted to Grayswood Cricket Club, which is an active club within my ward, with a strong youth side, and it's been playing on that green for many years. This lease will allow great opportunity to take grants and improve facilities. I often watch cricket there in the summer months, and this beautifully kept green, some of it is moaned by Waverley, although the club, I think, do the square themselves. With the church in the background is the most beautiful and lovely English scene, and I'm very pleased to see this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Knowles. Leader?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. That concludes the minutes of the executive of the 8th of October 2018. Thank you.
Thank you very much, leader. We will now move on to item nine, minutes of the audit committee. Councillor John Gray to present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to present the two sets of minutes for the 24th of July and the 25th of September. And I believe I have a second. Please to second, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
There are three items. They're both from the second set of minutes, that are in part one. Shall I take them one by one?
Yes.
So if we take item one, which is the tax strategy, strange document. This is a document that basically comes out of the Criminal Finance Act of 2017, and it's a document that we have to have. It's a well-written document. It's quite simple to read, and it's part of the strategy not to fall foul of it. Good policies, good process, and good communications is what's contained within this. That's all I want to say on that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything they wish to say on the tax strategy? If not, councillor Gray, shall we move to the recommendation, which is to approve the tax strategy?
Yeah, thank you.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
And if we could move on to the second item, which is the financial regulations updates, and in there, there's some small amendments that have been made to bring this in line, and if I could just switch pages in here. Part of it's an overlap with the contract procedure rules, but basically it's to amend part of the financial regulations to cover large contracts, and also to pick up on an improved and streamlined process for debt write-off. Debt write-off was one of the issues that came out of the audit. A good suggestion has been made into how they can streamline the write-off of these debts. And these debts that we're talking about, being written off, are debts that are provided. This is basically tidying up of the accounts. And this will delegate to the section 1.5, one officer, the ability to do that and to do it under his own signature. That's all I really want to say on that.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item? If not, then we'll move to the recommendation, which is to approve the update to the financial regulations. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Gray?
Thank you. Item three, contract procurement rules. A very good piece of work that was done just over 12 months ago. A lot of work was put in by officers, by the audit committee, in terms of going through it. But after 12 months, there's some small amendments that have been put forward to the audit committee, covering turnover sign-off, large contracts, and the process to go through for final payments, contract sign-off and sealing, contract extensions and waivers. I must apologise, we had a marked-up copy. Yours is not marked up. But the turnover is, the turnover sign-off is actually covered on page 73, and you can see it in there. Large contracts is page 77. Contract sign-off, page 76. Contract extension, 77. And waivers was on page 69, coming back. I have nothing further to say, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have anything they wish to add to this item? If not, then the recommendation is to approve the update to the updated contract procedure rules. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Councillor Gray?
Thank you. If I could, before we go to part two, I don't know if there's any speakers?
There are no further speakers now. No, there's no speakers on part two.
Okay. Could I just say that part of the work that's covered by these two sets of minutes are the account and the annual audit? And I'd like to compliment our finance team on an excellent work in producing the accounts. The audit is an unqualified audit. We've mentioned debt write-offs, but there's very minimal amounts of comments that could be made on it. Another thing that's been discussed in there is the annual governance statement, which I think has been considerably improved. And there is there the extensive report on what the audit committee is all about. I'm very fortunate to be supported by a number of dedicated members on the audit team, and I would also like to thank them for their work, especially over the last 12 months. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gray. There are no exempt items to consider, so thank you for attending this meeting, and the meeting of the council is now closed. We now move to the meeting of the council as trustee of the Joseph Ewart Bequest, which is a separate document that you will have received. Can I confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 17th of October as a correct record of that meeting?
Agreed.
I will sign these later. Were there any apologies or as noted at the beginning of this evening's council meeting? Do members have any interests to declare? So I will invite councillor Jed Hodd to introduce the report and move the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this meeting is for the council acting as the sole trustee of the Ewart Bequest Trust and to approve the annual report and accounts for the year ended 31st of March 2018. This trust owns a number of houses in Farnham, in the Farnham area, which are held principally for elderly people with limited financial resources. The trust operates these through Waverley's housing management team. The accounts have been prepared in accordance The accounts have been prepared in accordance with the charity's code of practice and have been externally examined by Grant Thornton, and their report is attached to the papers. The reserves level is healthy, and as the report states, much of this is earmarked for further development. I have no specific matters to report to the board of trustees. I recommend that the board approve the annual report and accounts for the year ended 31st of March 2018. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Hall. I just wanted to move back slightly, just to say that we will record councillor Hyman's apologies to both trustee meetings. Councillor Beeman, I believe you wish to speak on this item?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. These particular houses are in the ward that I represent in Farnham, College Gardens, so obviously I have a very particular interest in this particular trust. When I read the papers, a number of questions started to arise in my mind, which I then posed to officers, because I began to particularly wonder why we hadn't made much progress with the planning permission granted in 2016. I'm pleased to say that I'm very grateful to the officers who provided me with all the answers I required to the question I asked. I won't have to bother you here tonight about them, I'm pleased to say. And I would like to particularly thank Mr Clark, in particular, for the help he provided to me. Indeed, so... I would say, however, and I also like to say that I look forward to the completion of the works in College Gardens by the end of the year, hoping well, and hopefully the three new houses that will be built on Greenfield Road, hopefully, next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Beeman. Any other speakers? Are the annual financial report and accounts for the year ending 31st of March 2018 agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. And I can now close the meeting of the council as trustee for the Joseph Uwark Bequest. We now move to the meeting of the council as trustee of the Shottlemill Trust. Can I confirm the minutes of the meeting which took place on the 17th of October 2017? Is that 2017? Yes? Yes. Are those agreed? Thank you. I will sign these later. Do members have any interests to declare? I will, as, invite councillor Jed Hodd to introduce the report and move the recommendation again, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this meeting is for the council acting as sole trustee of the Shottlemill Recreation Ground Trust and to approve the annual reports and accounts for the year ending 31st of March 2018. This trust owns Hazelmead Leisure Centre and operates it through Waverley's overall management contract with Places for People. The accounts have been prepared in accordance with the charity's code of practice and have been externally examined by Grant Thornton, and their report is attached with the papers. The reserves level is healthy, and I have no specific matters to report to the board of trustees at this time. I recommend that the board approve the annual reports and accounts for the year ended 31st of March 2018.
Thank you very much, councillor Hall. Are there any speakers on this item? If not, then is that agreed? Thank you. There are no further items to consider. This meeting is now closed.